From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace Nixle and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Welcome, everyone. Let's have a planning commission meeting, shall we? Let's see, if we could. Joe, if you wanted to lead us, salute to the flag. Ready for roll call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner French?
Present.
Commissioner Foley?
Here.
Commissioner McAtier?
Here.
Commissioner Garst?
Here.
Chair Millman?
Present.
Thank you.
Are there any corrections to the agenda?
No corrections.
Excellent. Okay, let's open this up to public comment on anything that is not on today's agenda. So if you want to come up to the podium, Neil has three minutes to talk. Okay, seeing no one, we will close that public comment and move on to commission business, which I don't think we have any today. And no consent items either, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, moving along briskly, we have reached the public hearing, and I'm going to turn this over to staff to introduce.
Thank you, Chair Millman. Steve Geiger, senior planner in our office, will be giving you the staff report, and I'll turn it over to Steve.
Good afternoon, commission members. My name is Steve Geiger, and I'm the senior planner with Planning Department. So today's project is being proposed by North State Grocery, or the holiday market business. And just by way of background, the proposed site that we're looking at is located on the east side of Pleasant Valley Road, south side of Pine and Shadows Lane, and it's approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of Highway 20 and Pleasant Valley Road. It's a five-and-a-half acre parcel in size. Currently, it has actually two zone districts, C-1 SP and M-1 PD SP, also corresponding to general plan designations of neighborhood commercial and industrial. It is located within a small commercial-industrial corridor that's located along the east side of Pleasant Valley Road, and it's within the Pleasant Valley community region. It's approximately one mile south of the Lake Wildwood subdivision. The applicant currently operates a grocery store that's within the commercial area located directly across from the entrance to Lake Wildwood. The applicant is not able to expand the size of the existing store and wishes to do so to provide more products and services, and therefore is proposing this project. So this project is made up of a number of different applications. You have a general plan amendment along with a zoning map amendment, and that will involve increasing the amount of neighborhood commercial from approximately 1.9 to 4.3 acres and decreasing the amount of industrial from approximately 3.6 to 1.2 acres. It also will involve the corresponding rezone for the resultant 4.3 acres to C-1 SP and 1.2 acres to M-1 PD SP. Also involved is a development permit, and development permit specifically addresses the development and operation of the 30,711 square foot grocery store with an approximate 750-foot square foot interior area that's going to be designated, set aside for Starbucks Coffee, and also will include an outdoor seating area directly outside that area. A management plan is also being proposed because of the required removal of 4.64 acres of Landmark Groves, which includes five landmark oak trees. And along with it, this project is initial study and mitigated negative declaration pursuant to SEQA and the SEQA guidelines. So as mentioned, the project does have two different general plan designations and two different zoning districts. The parcels to the north and the south actually have similar designations and zoning classifications. The general plan amendment and rezone will adjust the boundary line, the existing boundary line, between the neighborhood commercial and industrial to the east, increasing the size of the commercial portion in order to accommodate the proposed grocery store building. There's no new general plan or new zoning designations proposed by the project. It's simply just reallocating the existing zoning and general plan designations. The GPA and rezone will be consistent with the county's general plan, and it will be compatible with the zoning designations and also the land uses of surrounding parcels. So for the development permit, the project staff has reviewed the project in light of the development standards, and the project does meet all the C-1 C-1 building development standards. The proposed building will have varying setbacks from Pleasant Valley Road ranging from 250 to 400 feet. It'll have a total of 158 parking spaces provided, where 154 are required by the code. Its primary access will be from Pine and Shadows Lane to the north. Commercial Avenue will be extended onto the subject property coming from the south from Pleasant Valley to provide a secondary access. The front of the building will be oriented to the west towards Pleasant Valley, and it will utilize a variety of neutral earth cone colors and a variety of building materials, including metal roofing, cement, plaster siding, and other treatments. There will be specific architectural treatments, including wall variations, different colors and materials, and varying roof lines also. Staff believes that the building and project is consistent with both the Penn Valley Area Plan Guidelines and the Western Nevada County Design Guidelines. With regard to signage, the site plan that was submitted shows a proposed monument sign located along Pleasant Valley, approximately 80 feet south of Pine and Shadows Lane, and also wall-mounted signage above the entrance in front of the building. The applicant has not finalized their design details of the signage, but as a condition of approval, they will be required to submit a comprehensive sign program consistent with county's requirements for review and approval. Lighting for the project will consist of 25 parking lot pole lights proposed, and 19 of those will be 20 feet in height, and six of them located behind the building or east side will be 15 feet in height. The shorter 15-foot height is required due to the agricultural rural zoning that's adjacent to the east. There are mitigation measures being required that will require the outdoor light fixtures be shaded, shielded, and pointed downward to eliminate glare and prevent light spillage on neighboring properties. And also, a final lighting and photometric plan will be required to be submitted, demonstrating that all project lighting will be maintained on site. The applicant submitted a preliminary landscape plan that includes six different tree species and 10 different shrub species. The proposed trees will meet the 40% shading requirement of the parking lot. The required buffer landscape areas are being proposed along the street frontages. And projects that are within commercial zoning districts located below 4,000-foot elevation on parcels greater than one acre are required by our code to provide a minimum of 15% of the site as open space. The proposed project will provide approximately 39% of the site as open space. With regard to water and sewer, the parcel is located within the boundaries of NIDs. Water service is available from the Lake Wildwood Treatment Plant Development. The parcel is currently outside the boundaries of the Nevada County Sanitation District and will require annexation into the district through a LAFCO, which is a separate process. The district has indicated that it has capacity to serve the project. With regard to the management plan, as mentioned, it's required to protect landmark trees, oak trees, as well as groves. A total of eight landmark trees were identified on the site, and that's trees, oak trees 36 inches or larger, measured at breast height. Also, the interior live oak woodland on the subject site has a greater than 33% canopy closure, so therefore it's considered a landmark grove by the county code. Of the eight landmark trees identified, five will be removed to accommodate the proposed building and other improvements. The remaining three are actually located east of the building and proposed improvements and will not be affected. The applicant will be required to mitigate for the loss of these trees through payment into the INLU mitigation fund that's administered by the Bear Yuba Land Trust. As far as the environmental review, the project, of course, is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, and initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared. There was a public review period that ran from October 17, 2025, through November 17, 2025. Comments were received from many individuals during and also following this review period. There are no substantial revisions needed or that require recirculation pursuant to SEQA. And staff notes that supplemental information has been provided to the planning commission provided following the staff report distribution. Potential impacts to environmental factors that have been mitigated at less than significant levels are shown there on the screen. They include aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. The primary issue that has been raised and was raised at a October 8, 2025 Town Hall meeting held at the Lake Wildwood subdivision is transportation, traffic, traffic safety-related issues. The applicant was required to have a traffic study prepared, and it was prepared by a traffic consultant, GHD. In the traffic study, it evaluated five primary intersections near the project site for both weekday AM and PM peak hour conditions based on traffic counts from August 2022. The intersections had existing AM and PM peak hour level of service that ranged from Level of Service A all the way up to D, which is operating at acceptable conditions that is required by the circulation element of the general plan. The study noted that there was significant vehicle queuing observed from southbound left-turn movement from Pleasant Valley Road on eastbound Highway 20 during the AM peak hour. This queue dissipated after 15 to 30 minutes during the AM peak hour. With the project trip generation that's added, the study notes that four out of the five intersections would still be operating at acceptable conditions, which again is Level of Service D or better during the AM and PM peak. Pleasant Valley Road and Commercial Avenue would fall to a Level of Service E during the PM peak hour. In order to address this drop in the level of service, the traffic study identified a mitigation measure requiring the applicant to restripe the westbound Commercial Avenue approach to Pleasant Valley to include shared left, shared left turn, excuse me, left-through lane and a separate right turn lane. Now on the screen, just for the commission's benefit, Commercial Avenue is this road right here, and as you can see from the aerial, there is no current lane marking or lane delineation. This is the area that would be required to be striped by that mitigation measure. There are, with these improvements, the intersection overall level of service would improve from E back up to D and would result in consistency with the general plan. Now, there are seven additional mitigation measures that are being required to address potential transportation impacts, including the requirement that the applicant pay the county's local transportation mitigation fee to be applied to future county roadway improvements. Now, due to the concerns that were raised at the October 8 Town Hall meeting regarding the age of the traffic count data used, which again is from August 2022, the applicant had the traffic consultant conduct new AM peak hour and PM peak period traffic counts at all five of those project study intersections on Pleasant Valley Road. The new peak period traffic counts were conducted on Tuesday, October 21, when schools were in session and typical of a typical commute period for employees traveling to and from work. The results of these revised counts show that the new 2025 intersection volumes are lower at every project study intersection with one exception, Pleasant Valley Road and Highway 20. At this location, the PM peak hour traffic volumes were 6.9% higher than the previous 2022 volumes. Intersection operations were recalculated, and as a result of the increased volumes, operations at the Pleasant Valley Road Highway 20 intersection would remain unchanged from previous 2022 levels with an increase of one and a half seconds of delay in overall intersection level of service. So there'd be no change to the level of service, an increase in traffic, but no change in level of service. To address potential traffic safety issues at Pleasant Valley Road and Pine and Shadows Lane, condition has been added requiring the applicant to stripe the westbound Pine and Shadows Lane approach to Pleasant Valley to include a separate left and a right turn lane. Now, that on the slide here, this is Pine and Shadows Lane bordering the property along the north side, and as you can see from the aerial, there is no lane delineation markings here. That would be required to be striped to show a dedicated left turn, left and right turn So in addition to your staff report, a memo was distributed to the commission by email last week on November 26. The memo addresses issues that were raised in a November 17 comment letter from Remy Moose and Manley representing the Lake Wildwood Association. This comment letter is included and claims the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project is inadequate and that an EIR is required for the project. Issues addressed in this memo include aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, transportation, utilities and service systems, and the fair argument standard for requiring preparation of an EIR. Responses to the letter are provided by a variety of different individuals and departments, including county planning, county public works, county council, the applicant's air quality consultant, as well as their traffic consultant. The responses conclude that the project will not have a significant impact on any of these issues brought up, including transportation and traffic, and with the recommended mitigation measures, the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project is appropriate. Also in this memo includes additional public comments received subsequent to the distribution of the staff report. So it is staff's recommendation that the commission today take action to recommend approval of the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program, and that they recommend approval of the project subject to the recommendations, subject to the conditions and mitigation measures as well contained in the staff report. Now, today, the commission was provided with a second memo that was distributed containing additional public comments that were received basically as the first memo was being finalized and prepared and comments that came in over the Thanksgiving Day weekend through this morning. So those have been provided. Included in that letter is a letter from Mitchell Chadwick representing the applicant, and that letter addresses the issues raised in the Remy, Moore, and Manley letter, so I wanted to point that out. This concludes my presentation unless the commission has any questions.
Thank you. Let's start with you, Commissioner.
Yes. Could you go back, go back? Go back to that map of commercial and Pleasant Valley, please?
This one here?
No, the one just showing the asphalt there.
Oh, the aerial, okay.
Yeah. Right there. So I'm sure you thought of this, but is there any way to, looks like perhaps widen that a bit where the landscaping is to?
For the, well, on the south side of the intersection?
For, you know, a potential left turn lane, right turn lane?
That improvement was not identified, you know, as being necessary by the Public Works Department who reviewed the project as well as the traffic consultant. We do have representatives from Public Works. I can let them, defer to them to give specifics on that as far as the dimensions and the width, but that was not expressed as a concern, a need for widening.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move.
I just have a few. So you explained in mitigation 17C how on commercial, there's going to be restriping, showing a right, left, and a through traffic line. On 17D, there's also a mitigation measure that it sounds like it pertains to Highway 20 and Pleasant Valley, adding an additional left-hand eastbound turn lane onto Highway 20. Am I reading that correctly?
The mitigation measure, as it's written, it is a little bit confusing. What it sets out to do is basically describe a future project, a project to improve that intersection. So the requirement is actually that the applicant contribute to the county's local transportation mitigation fee, and they'll be required to do that for the future improvement of that intersection. So the mitigation is basically just kind of letting everyone know, here's, here's the plans, or here's, here's the proposed project for the future is to improve this intersection. But as far as the requirement for the applicant, they'd just be required to pay the mitigation fee.
So when it, in regards to what it says for timing, that prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy, that's just paying the fee?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Let's see, I have a few notes here. It says the oak tree mitigation fees, which was roughly around $100,000, I think you said it, goes to the Bear Yuba Land Trust. Is there any, any way to utilize those fees, that money for the Penn Valley area, or does that just go into a general type fund?
Commissioner Foley, there's no specific requirement to utilize it in the Penn Valley area. I have had conversations with Aaron Tarr, the executive director of the land trust, and when they were developing their program, that they do try to identify land in the area that the mitigation comes from a project and try to put it back into that area as much as possible. It's, there's not a specified requirement, but that is their practice to try to do a little bit of a like-for-like type of replacement when they're identifying land to purchase to protect that they will try to locate in those areas. And the Penn Valley area is really one of the prime areas that the land trust targets because it does contain most of oak woodlands and things like that, whereas the higher portions, higher elevation portions of the county don't have as many oak trees. So most likely that the money will be used for protecting land that is in that general Penn Valley area.
Is that something that can be like a formal request? Can we request that?
Yeah, we can request that to the land trust as part of the conditions. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The, the signage for, for the market, it's my understanding that's, that's going to be on the, for the Pine Shadow entrance, correct? Or has that still not been determined by the applicant?
Actually, their site plan.
It's in between?
The, the site plan shows the monument sign actually, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, but along Pleasant Valley Road in this location is where, at least preliminarily, the applicant has indicated their location for the monument sign.
So it's closer to the, to the Pine Shadow. And then is that the preferred entryway and exit out of the, out of the grocery store?
Pine Shadows Lane, yes. That is the, is intended to be the primary access point.
I just noticed when we were looking at some of the aerial photos, it looked like there was quite a bit of vegetation around where those new turn lanes will be out of Pine Shadow and on commercial. Is that, some of it's not on, on the applicant's property, but is there a potential for that to be cleared so we have good visual access looking at both directions?
Oh, yes, yes, definitely. Site distance will be required, adequate site distance will be required for that, that entrance and egress, yeah.
Okay. And, you know, just kind of going through, reading through all And, you know, just kind of going through, reading through all the public comments and stuff, obviously traffic is the highest concern. It sounds like these issues have been known about and been around for quite some time. So I'm curious if Caltrans or the county has plans in the future to address some of the traffic concerns that already exist on Pleasant Valley Road?
Yes, staff's understanding is that Caltrans is still kind of working on plans for that intersection and what that ultimately would look like, but I know that our Public Works Department is in contact with them and will be staying up to date on what their future plans are for that intersection when they become more concrete.
No clear timeline, though, for that?
No, I have not heard a timeline.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garst?
Yeah, John covered some of the questions I had. One of the questions in regards to this future project was that the applicant would be required to pay some of the traffic improvement fees of that proposed project. And it states that they will pay their fair share of that improvement. Is there any guidelines as to what that, what their portion of that would be?
So there is a formula that Public Works uses based on size of the project, so forth. Public Works indicates that their total fee that they'll be required to pay is $307,000 and some change for the project?
Fairly substantial. And then I was, back to the traffic study, I'm a little bit confused about the language. It states that there are five intersections and they ranged from an existing LOS of A to D, and then there is a policy 3.10 that states do not let further, do not let LOS further decline, but it sounds like at several of those intersections, it will be a decline from an A, an existing A to a proposed D, and I'm a little confused as to which intersections are, have an existing LOS that's less than D, and which ones are, yeah, just a little bit confused as to how that translates.
Okay, so yeah, the policy basically says that intersections shall remain at level of service D or better in community regions. If the level of service happens to be lower than that, like an E, it can't drop any further, it can't get any worse. So that's basically what the policy says. So all the intersections existing range from A through D. So the only one, as I mentioned before, that would fall would be the Pleasant Valley Road Commercial Avenue intersection, that would fall to an E.
I see, I see, okay. I was confused about that. There is some conversation about the pedestrian walkways being required by the Penn Valley Area Plan, but they're not being required at this property because they were not required at adjacent properties. And my question was, is, were those adjacent properties developed under the current Penn Valley Area Plan or a previous plan that didn't require pedestrian walkways?
Commissioner Garst, those were developed under the, maybe even before there was a Penn Valley Area Plan. The previous Penn Valley Area Plan did not include the north side of Highway 20, so the newest one that was adopted a few years ago included this area.
So the new guidelines would require pedestrian walkways, but they're not being considered or required at this property?
Yeah, I believe that is correct, and Public Works might be able to respond to questions regarding the pedestrian linkages.
Is that because they wouldn't necessarily lead anywhere?
I would imagine that is a big part of it.
Okay. And then I was just curious if it's typical for a corporation's names to be specifically outlined in a recommendation? So this recommendation does not call out Holiday Market, it calls out a grocery store, but then it calls out Starbucks specifically, and I was just curious about that language. And does that then prohibit that coffee shop space to ever be used by another business that's a coffee shop, or is it now tied to Starbucks exclusively?
No, we wouldn't tie it directly to just Starbucks. It's a coffee shop. The reason that that language was included just to, because we had a specific name, just to include that for the benefit of the commission, the board supervisors, to get a sense of what type of business might be there. So the applicant has specified that that's who it's going to be, so we just included it in the description.
Okay, that's all I had.
Commissioner McKeer?
Thank you. So I went out there yesterday to see the traffic situation and all, and I didn't know there was a house on the property, and I gather that's going to be torn down in the proposal, correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
And, okay, and tell me about the grading, because there's going to be a lot of earth movement. Is there enough of fill from the east side that can fill out the west side? Are you bringing in additional fill on that, you know?
I'll probably have to defer to the applicant, the engineer, to give a little bit more detail on that. Of course, they will be required to submit detailed grading and drainage plan to the county that will be reviewed, all the earth that they're going to move, you know, and they'll have to do that in accordance with all the county's requirements. But as far as the total amount, I'll probably have to defer to the applicant.
So it's going to be, though, I can only guess, that at the same level that the adjoining commercial property is, the earth, correct?
Well, obviously, the site slopes upward from Pleasant Valley, so you're going to have the actual parking lot and building are going to be set back, and they are going to be obviously higher than Pleasant Valley.
Right, so my question was, the current commercial properties to the south of it, correct? They are considerably higher than the frontage area of Pleasant Valley Road. It's going to be raised up to that level. I mean, it's all going to be the same height, is that correct?
I would imagine that they're going to plan to do that, but again, I'll defer to the engineer.
So with that, could you please describe, since you have this screen up there, what are all, because there's going to be a big hill, and one of the questions from the attorneys is this idea of the aesthetics. Could you please describe what it's going to look like aesthetically on that frontage? No, not that. I'm interested in the ground, grounds.
Okay, so what you have is the elevations here, obviously with the rise in the elevation, you're going to have basically landscaping along the frontage there, along with some, what is that? Existing trees.
Right, what are those, this is all being, I mean, the pluses are trees that are staying, is that correct?
Correct, in the southwest corner.
Okay, so that's going to help diffuse some of the, some of the look of the market, and then along all these little dotted trees, what are those?
You've got new trees planted in here, along there, trees and shrubs, you've got two rockery retaining walls along here, and then you step up, and then you're at the parking lot level.
So really, if I were standing down on that road, on Pleasant Valley Road, and looking up towards the market, I'm not sure I'd even see the market.
It's going to be, right, it's going to be partially hidden because of the change in topography, as well as the landscaping and existing trees, yes.
Currently, there is parking allowed on Commercial Drive, and I don't know how you can fit a car and a delivery truck, wherever, further down this road, sorry, do you have a picture down this road?
On Commercial?
Yes.
This is the best shot I have.
No, so go down another hundred yards, and what you have is this same driveway, this same width, but cars parking at a 90-degree.
Right, and those parking spaces will be required to be eliminated, the angular parking.
Yes.
They're proposing allowances for parallel parking, but yes, that actual angled parking will be done away with to make suitable travel lanes for Commercial.
Okay. Why is it that the work for the traffic isn't being done after it opens? Why aren't, why isn't that the lines, et cetera, being done before it opens?
The striping requirements?
Yes.
That will be required to be in place before occupancy.
Okay, then let's go to, let's go to the next slide if you don't mind, up there by Pine Shadows, thank you. Okay, so this striping here on Pleasant Valley Road has cars being able to turn in both directions. Why aren't you, why aren't you automatically just putting that as a left-hand turn lane, or are you?
Yeah, I'll defer, we have Public Works staff here available, so I will defer to them to give more specific responses.
Sure.
So the, Tricia Tilson, I'm the Community Development Agency Director, hi. So the traffic analysis did not show that it was required to cut the two-way left turn lane that's currently there. That's certainly something that could be done if needed.
Well, seeing that, seeing that you're promoting most people to come in that way, and since most people will be coming, the store users will be coming from Lake Wildwood, they'll want to be using that access because it's the first access, I would only think that that would be an automatic, that you'd say, let's put a left-hand turn lane, because the only way, and then, you know, stopping it somewhere right where those arrows are currently up here on this map, so that if you wanted to take a left-hand turn onto whatever that street is there at the top of the road, they could do. But I would sure want to encourage people that you've got a dedicated left-hand turn lane for your access.
We could certainly condition it that way, it's just, based on the traffic analysis and our review as well, it's not necessary on a traffic standard.
Okay, then tell, tell me, you know, I know where I live over by Nevada Union, the lights are programmed at different times based on Nevada Union's bell schedule. So the lights down at Pleasant Valley are not based on any traffic schedule, they're just, is that correct? They're just sort of, they are what they are?
I believe that is not correct.
Okay, good.
We've been working with Caltrans over the last month, based primarily because of the information that's come forward as part of this project, and so they have adjusted the timing. They're continuing to do that, though. We've heard that certain times it's actually been improved, other times it's not working as well, so we're continuing to work with Caltrans on fine tuning the...
Because another five or 10 seconds on that left-hand turn solves a tremendous amount of problems on that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm interested in why there was, you know, the attorneys referenced the EIR for the Dollar General Stores. Could you please tell me why you believe the Dollar General Stores deserved a EIR and this project does not?
Yeah, I'm not remembering the details of that project 10 years ago, so I don't know the specifics, other than it was a different neighborhood, a different set of circumstances that were applicable to the Dollar General Stores that are not the same in this situation.
Does your, I mean, I didn't see a response to that question on the, in the response from the planning department, from you, Mr., sorry, I forget your name, I'm sorry. Geiger, Mr. Geiger, do you have any response to that at all?
No, just what Brian has mentioned, he's obviously been here longer than I have with regard to reasons, you know, every project is looked at individually on its own merits for potential impacts, and this project, staff felt, did not rise to the level of an EIR being required.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
So my questions are, actually, a lot of my questions have been answered, so thank you guys, one of the advantages to going last. My question is on the zoning change. So right now with its commercial and then industrial behind it, by pushing the commercial further back, it seems like in the future potentially, additional parcels would push the commercial further back, and I'm wondering if you guys are, were you hoping that there would be more industrial in this area?
Commissioner Millman, you know, I don't know that there was a hope that there would be more industrial. They were zoned probably back in the 90s, maybe in the 80s, I'm not quite sure how long ago. They've been zoned that way for at least 30 years. It could be based on the development patterns that were in place when new zoning took place. I believe the parcel to the south that contains the existing shopping center made some adjustments to the zoning when it went in to fit the proposed development at the time. So I don't know that there was a specific reason between the, how the zoning was divided up. I think the thinking is that you have commercial kind of along the roadway, the retail-type space for visibility and advertising, whereas the industrial would go behind that area that's, you know, contains more intensive-type land uses, so that's just kind of why the commercials in the front and the industrials in the back. And as far as the sizes, I don't know that there was a rhyme or reason for those specific locations.
And generally, how this area has been developing is with more people and therefore more commercial services?
Yeah, in fact, the development to the south, some more commercial-type of businesses have moved into kind of those industrial zones, the pizza place and the brewery that's down there, they, there is some limitations and some allowances for commercial uses than M1, but there seems to be more of a need for the commercial uses than the M1, at least what we've seen for businesses looking for existing spaces to move into.
And then, thank you, back to the pedestrian linkages. So, I mean, we're assuming that we're not requiring those because they don't lead anywhere, but then if we don't put them in on this parcel, then when the next parcel goes, then it still wouldn't lead anywhere, right? What do we, how do we generally handle that in the county?
Commissioner Millman, so again, Tricia Tilson, we did look at pedestrian access, and we worked pretty closely with Holiday Market and their traffic consultant on this. Really, we were looking at utilizing Commercial Avenue to Pine Shadows as the pedestrian access because if you look at Pleasant Valley Road right in front of the property, there's a very steep incline, and essentially like a bridge, right, on the roadway. So to, you know, require them to widen the roadway there would be very, very expensive. Not impossible, nothing's impossible, but it didn't seem fair for this developer. It doesn't mean that the roadway not be widened in the future. We also have, if you look at our active transportation plan approved by Nevada County Transportation Commission, there's also a plan to widen this whole section of roadway, adding in a full bicycle lane. And when that came through, then the county would be able to put that type of project in, but the cost of the project versus what's being proposed here today didn't work.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, I have no further questions. Is anybody?
Yeah, I have one more. Regarding the two-way left turn lanes, what would be a potential fix? I think we've probably all experienced you get out in a suicide lane or two-way left turn lane and all of a sudden, oh no, here comes somebody else turning the left the other way, and there's no way to really predict traffic flow right now, but if that becomes a major issue, which I could see happening, what would be the remedy for that?
So re-striping is very easy to do, so that's something that, we've talked to the consultant as well as, immediately with the project breaking the two-way left turn lane right at Pine Shadows, so that you wouldn't have that conflict, but, you know, as the county, we continuously monitor the roadways, and if we had to re-stripe it, we could easily do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think at this point, do we have like a statement from the applicant, or are we moving to public comment?
I believe the applicant would like to make a presentation. I believe the applicant would like to make a presentation.
There, can you hear me now? Thank you, well, thank you for, uh, your time in consideration of our project. I'm Richie Morgan, I'm the Chairman of the Board of North State Grocery, uh, was President and CEO, and have since, uh, relentless outrolled to another individual who actually coincidentally happened to be the store leader of our store for many years up there, uh, couldn't be here today. So, when we started looking at this project, um, we, we have a long history with Nevada County. We've been doing business in two sites, one at Lake of the Pines, and one here at Lake Wildwood, Penn Valley, for almost 36 years now, so it's been a long time. Both those existing stores were smaller stores we purchased from an independent grocer named Ron Gerard, um, back in 1989. Um, I remember it vividly because while we were in the stores, we merchandising the San Francisco earthquake happened where the baseball game was going on, so I always remember that date. Um, and so, we, we've had a very successful history in those, both those stores. We've had great customer acceptance of us. Um, but one thing we haven't been able to provide, or had not been able to provide, is a really good shopping experience. The customers in those two locations have supported us for those 36 years in what we consider suboptimal conditions. Um, at our Lake of the Pines store, we were able to, um, about three and a half, four years ago, we were able to work with the project and move our store out on Highway 49, um, to a new site, and that's been very successful for us, been very well-received by the customers. Our older store was, uh, it was hard to get into, limited parking, no services that we normally provide, bakery deli, things like that, very small. The building was antiquated and those types of things. So, we also looked at doing that with our Lake Wildwood store, although in that case, we thought maybe there's potential to remodel that store, to expand it, move into maybe some spaces adjacent, maybe move out the front, out the back, try to change that. We spent about a year studying that, trying to figure out how that could be done. And there were several things we just couldn't overcome when we looked at that. Um, one of those was the size and layout of the building, it's kind of a weird angular steps in and out. Um, would have made for kind of an odd shopping experience. The building had sheer wall issues, it would have created kind of little hallways to nowhere type of things. Um, and then, but two of the biggest issues, or really three, that we couldn't get over was the delivery, how the trucks had to deliver to the store. Currently at that store in Lake Wildwood, uh, Penn Valley, they have to go through the customer-facing parking lot. They have to know not to make the first, not to take the first section, but to turn a little left and go to the section section. If they don't do that, they can't make the right turn to go behind the store, and they block the entire store. And now you have a truck sitting there in front of the store, customers are coming in behind, it's, it's, it's not, not fun, not pretty. So, there's a sign there telling them what to do, but they don't always follow that. So, that was one of the issues we had. Another issue we had was parking, there just really is very, very limited parking for that store. The parking lot is also on multiple levels, so you kind of have to go up and down to get to different spots, uh, not very level. Hard for shopping cars to stay still, things like that. Um, and then the, the, the third one was, there really is only one way in and one way out of that shopping center. So, that creates traffic issues, especially if we have truck deliveries in, coming in. Even if the truck driver does it right, they're still blocking the parking lot, and, and customers who want to leave or come in have to wait for that. So, that create a large traffic issue. So, once we started realizing this may not work, even if we threw a lot of money at it, we may not get a great result, we started looking for another site. What, what could we do potentially to relocate the store in an area that is, is still convenient for the Lake Wildwood shoppers, but gives us those things that we need? A bigger, better store to offer all the services we need, the ability to get in and out of the store two different ways, and then also, how do we keep the truck traffic pretty much separated from the customer traffic? And that's what happened with this site, if you could bring up the site plan for me real quick. Uh, when we found this property, we started looking and driving around, looking on Google Maps, doing kind of things you do. Um, and so, we, we started laying out this piece of property. We found it was zoned properly, albeit the percentage of zoning was off from what we would need for the grocery store. Um, and so, we, we started laying out the design and realized we could have all those things we wanted. We could have two entrances, in and out of the store. The trucks would come in off Commercial Avenue, and they would go to the side of the store and behind the store, and then in back of the store, those trucks would be able to do what they do, turn around, you know, unload, out of the, you know, out of the way of the customer, and have plenty of room to do that. One problem with our current store is, there's really only room for one truck back there at a time to comfortably unload. So, we had that, and then, then as you can see in the front, by moving the store back on the site, um, changing the zoning a little bit, we have ample parking, and it's a nice wide-open parking field. You don't have to try to figure out if you're going to park over in this lane and come back through this way, or whatever you're going to do. So, it really fit all of those things for us. So, we started looking at the property zoning, realized again it was zoned properly. We did ask, because it looked like, if you look at it, to answer the question that, um, was asked earlier, what's the level of it? So, basically, if you drive on Commercial Avenue, that's the level. You'll drive, it's pretty much flat all the way through. So, we looked at it and said, "Wait, somebody must have been planning for Commercial Avenue to go through, because it just deadens there, it's not a cul-de-sac, it's not anything." So, somebody planned, and I think what happened is, when they put it through, they just picked the zoning half on one side, half on the other, like was mentioned, just nineteen, you know, 1990, pick a line, figure it out later. Um, so, that's where we felt that if that zoning could be adjusted, so the zoning for the grocery store became a little larger, and the zoning for the industrial became a little smaller, um, this whole thing would work. And we did look at the topography, you know, because there is a lot of dirt to move around Nevada County. That's kind of a common thing, not a lot of flat ground in Nevada County. Um, so, and even our existing store, it was kind of cut into a hillside, um, so it's not flat there either. So, but it looked like the, it would level out, once you move the dirt from the back where it's high to the front where it's low, everything gets level, um, and so the site really started to work well. So, after studying that, we decided to purchase the site and then proceed with the application process, where I think we started roughly two years ago. So, that was, that was really what we, you know, were looking to have. And it, it gave us everything we needed, um, the utilities were there, the, the site worked out, gave us the access for our customers, and then allowed us to expand what we offered. And that's, that's really our goal. The folks at, at Penn Valley, Lake Wildwood have really supported us well. And again, like I say, it's kind of a, a smaller, substandard store, it's, it's almost 50 years old. There's plumbing issues, different things like that. Uh, one thing about the building is very low, um, which allows, doesn't allow for us to, to maximize our storage. Um, you know, the roof's very low, in a new store, the ceilings are higher, so we're able to store more product there to offer more to our customers. Um, so that was really our goal, was to find a suitable site where we could offer those folks who support us really well with a fantastic supermarket. And we know we serve the local community, we, that's what we do. We're not a regional draw, we're not looking to try to get people from Marysville to come up to us, we're not looking to get people from Grass Valley to come shop with us. Could they, will they, potentially? We really service the local community, that's, that's our niche, that's what we've done, um, for almost 40 years now, in building stores in communities that, so people can stay in their community. They don't have to drive to the bigger towns. A lot of our stores are located like that, so, uh, Palos Hidro and Reading is an example, is a community out there. So, uh, we, we like to do that. One thing that's a little unique for this site, not, not, we have two of them now, you know, it got brought up, is the Starbucks. And that is owned by us, that's not Starbucks, that's just a branded coffee shop, much like you'd see at Target, Safeway. So, there was a question about the Starbucks, it's not Starbucks, it's us. It's our employees, it's just their brand, we license their brand. So, as we do other things in the store, in our stores where you see sushi, that's a licensed sushi, that's a sushi vendor that does that for us, and it's very common in the grocery industry to have that, so. It's just a coffee house, we do have Pete's Coffee, branded coffee shops in one of our stores, too, so it's not uncommon to have a branded coffee shop in our stores, and not uncommon for the grocery industry. So, that's not a significant change, we were always going to have coffee of some kind. We've just found better success with the Starbucks, so. So, with the site and the traffic, one thing that we do know is, we are going to derive more volume from the same shopper. Um, we end up, our sales per customer are about 10% higher in Lake of the Pines than they are in this store, simply because it's a bigger store. So, it's not new customers coming to us, it's the same person that was coming anyway, is just going to spend more because there's more to buy. So, again, that local serving, capturing more from their local trip, and satisfying that customer. And, you know, our, our long-term goal is, you don't get on Highway 20, and you don't drive to Marysville, and you don't drive to, to Grass Valley, you stay local and shop local. So, that's really what we want to have happen.
I have a question, is that okay? Thank you. Um, I'm interested in, there were a number of comments relative to the trucks coming in and out off of Commercial. And I don't see a problem coming into Commercial for the most part, they'd be coming off of 20 into Commercial. Um, can, there's a concern about them taking, though, that left turn, because there's a short distance between Highway 20 and Commercial, a big, uh, truck making that left turn. Do you have any concerns about that? And might that truck, though, see that problem and then go out Pine Shadows, which has more visibility than Commercial?
Potentially, yes, I, I don't think they would. Um, it's just because it's going to feel odd to turn right and go through the parking lot. You know, truck drivers kind of try to avoid pedestrians and traffic, so to get back out on the Commercial. Um, going left on there, I don't think will be a problem. Um, I was, and actually, the mitigation of striping is kind of funny, because I went to the site, too, before this meeting, was driving around, and I was coming out Commercial, I wanted to turn right to go down Pleasant Valley and go up, um, uh, Pine Shadows, and somebody, because there's no striping there, going left, parked themselves right in the middle of the intersection, and I could not make my right turn, I had to wait for them to leave to make my right turn. So, that's a real, that, that striping will eliminate a lot of that traffic.
So, let me ask staff on that, if you wouldn't mind commenting, because there were a few comments about that left-hand turn coming out of, uh, Commercial onto, onto Pleasant Valley. Oh, Tricia, we get you again.
Yeah, thank you, Tricia Tilson again, and, uh, one thing that's been mentioned, uh, previously at a town hall was that, uh, most of the truck deliveries, from what I understand, are, you know, not during peak hours. So, that's one really big reason why I think it's not going to be a major issue. Although I think you are right, if they did happen to come during a peak hour, uh, they may choose to turn right and go down Pine Shadows.
And, and we could certainly, you know, sign that so they know not to go that way. Um, one thing...
What do you mean, say that again?
Put a sign, trucks, you know, where the trucks would always go left, tell them to go that way.
Right.
Actually, in our current store, there's a sign telling the trucks where to go in the, in the parking lot. It's, it's not unusual for us to put up signs to direct truck traffic.
Do you have a problem if that truck comes out and then takes a right and goes in front of your store out Pine Shadows?
Um, I, I mean, it depends upon the time of the day. If it happened, it would just drive through and get through the parking lot, I mean, it happens, I don't think, um, uh, you know, it would not be the end of the world, I mean, there, every now and then a truck driver gets lost and doesn't know where to go, and...
How many big truck deliveries are there in the course of a day, since I'm not in the grocery business?
So, we had that, um...
Not the bread man coming with his regular van, but a big truck?
Yeah, big trucks, there's, I don't have the number, do you have that? I sent that, I don't have that top of my head. One thing we did do is, we looked at the Lake of the Pines store, which does significantly more of the new store, and our truck, our large and medium-sized truck deliveries at Lake of the Pines versus this store, if this store does the volume it does, which is significantly more, there's one difference in that delivery. So, having a larger-volume store doesn't generate more truck traffic, that same truck just has less stores on it. And some of the trucks that deliver, the, um, uh, gas station that's there now, the beer, the soda, those trucks are already in there, they're just going to go from there to our store, which is a lot of our deliveries is beer and soda truck drivers, so.
Well, your store is clo- closing, isn't it?
No, the, there's a gas station near the new store, the 76...
Gas, yes.
Yes, they have beer and soda at that gas station. That beer and soda delivery driver...
I see.
Will deliver that, so they're already going in there.
Right.
That, all those deliveries are currently going on Commercial, and then most likely coming back out of Commercial, driving all the way down Penn Valley, which is another benefit, you have, all that truck traffic is now not going down Penn Valley Road. It's staying there and going right back.
Well, there's no doubt you're going to create less traffic, essentially, going up the hill. I mean, more people are going to shop in the, in this bigger market than your current market. I've been in the current market, and it's small.
Yes.
How big, how big is it, and what's your new foot, footprint?
It's roughly 14,000 square feet, the new one's 30, so it's about twice as...
Got it. Tricia, did you find anything on that?
Um, I would defer to the traffic consultant who's here, but, um, but the traffic study primarily looks at is the AM and PMP hours, which, again, the trucks are typically not within those periods on purpose, because they don't want to get stuck in traffic. Um, so, I mean, if you looked at AM peak, the proposed market shows 87 total vehicles, and so it's just looking at total vehicles.
But I'm just, I'm just concerned, as, as, as you understand, about coming out of that market on Commercial with a big truck taking a left, and, and it being a very blind, blind turn there, coming into that gas station Commercial Street area.
I, I can get you that number, give me just a second.
Sure.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Yes.
My name is Peter Galloway, I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with GHD, worked on the traffic analysis for this. So, sorry, can everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Richie was able to send us the, uh, truck, truck data for a couple of his other stores, and if you look at the daily truck deliveries, it's divided into small, medium, heavy trucks. So, if you average out the heavy truck delivery, it's about five to six heavy trucks per day.
Okay.
Is what you have coming in and out.
So, since you're a traffic person, do you have any concern about those trucks coming out of Commercial taking a left?
I do during the peak commute hours, if you were...
Just that time, not, not any other time, just that a big truck comes out there?
If they were to come out during off-peak hours, I would have less of a concern, because truck drivers are usually pretty savvy about how they get in and out of their major, uh, intersections that...
They may be, but, they may be, but I'm not so sure about the average driver, who's, who's making that right-hand turn onto, onto Pleasant Valley Road. That's the, that's the concern I have, since I've done that a thousand times.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure of that. Um, well, one of the things we've suggested is to limit, limit the heavy trucks to off-peak hours.
Uh-huh.
Uh, that's, that's something we've suggested.
But you're saying five big trucks a day arrive there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead?
Yeah, question, how does the size of this store compare to the one at Lake of the Pines, and also the footprint that has more businesses downright fronting 49? How does this, size of this store and parking area compare to that one?
It's very similar, uh, it's, it's almost exact. I mean, it's not exact, but it's within, you know, hundreds of square feet in the store size, uh, and the parking field is very similar. Um, that store was part of a shopping center. Um, there's the store, there's Quick Pack Car Wash, there is, uh, some pads. So, this store will be on its own, there are no other businesses planned, so that's the biggest difference. Um, but the parking lot and the store are very, very similar.
Okay, thank you.
And you said the total square footage on that is about 30,000?
30,200-ish.
So, I've built a lot of grocery stores, would you agree that that's relatively small as far as grocery stores go?
That is, we are on the small side of operators, yeah, we probably built some of the smaller stores. 50,000 to 60,000 is kind of typical for a Safeway or a Rayleigh's.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have anything else?
No, just appreciate your time and thank you for consideration.
Well, thank you for your presentation, I think it is time for a public comment at this point. Okay, so, um, what we're going to do is have people, it seems like we have a fair amount of interest in this one, so let's have five or so people line up. Um, you'll have, uh, three minutes apiece for, for your comment. Um, don't forget to state your name and where you live at the beginning of your comment. Um, and if you are representing a group, please let us know. Um, generally, you'll get five minutes instead of the standard three. With that, let's get... With that, let's get started. Thank you so much.
Hello, how's it sound? Okay. My name is Sylvia Wright, my address is 14460 Lodgepole Drive, Penn Valley. Hello, I live in Lake Wildwood, I'm here to support the project plan, and to raise attention from the board, planning staff, and the North State Grocery Team to two particular interests, issues of interest to me. I may be the only person here today that's not talking about traffic, I'm going to talk about bugs and trees. My two issues are the native wildlife and native plants on the site currently, and the future plans for landscaping once the site is largely stripped bare. Regarding the native plants, as noted in the plant document, the planned documents, this is a landmark grove, many heritage trees will be cut down. The county has mitigation requirements that have been addressed, and I thank you for the local formal request, Mr. Foley, that mitigation be instituted as much as possible in the Penn Valley area. Losing this heavily wooded ecosystem will affect wildlife at all levels, from underground microorganisms to top-level predators, from fungi to hawks to mountain lions. I ask that, number one, all parties please attend to the best practices and county procedures that are in place for reducing these impacts as much as possible. Please do the required pre-construction surveys for bird nests and animal dens. Please enforce the environmental protections we have and the provisions for construction crew training. Please protect the undeveloped portion in the back of the parcel. And please respect any delays that are called for by the survey findings if you are doing construction in the spring when nesting and other activities are going on. Number two, I ask that all parties reconsider the plants that are listed in your landscape plans. You can do better. The county and Penn Valley area plans have publicly supported the use of native plants in public and in public-facing landscapes. Instead of crepe myrtle and Bradford pear, you could use more local native oaks. Instead of nandina, which is a terrible plant, you could have manzanita, more deer grass. And short, please don't replace native habitat with non-native commercial land-
Thank you.
Linda Murphy, Lake Wildwood, Jayhawk Drive. Board of Supervisors, North State Grocers. I love Holiday Market. I, for years, I frequented Lake Wildwood, excuse me, in Chester, Holiday Market, in Lake Almanor. My husband and I moved to the Nevada County area 60 years ago, and for 40 of those years, my husband was a schoolteacher and a coach. To supplement our income, we built and sold our homes here in Nevada County, our own homes, but usually built on acreage. To supplement our income, like I said, this really benefited us over the years. We have, we're delighted with the service when we moved to Lake Wildwood with Holiday Market. And as they, we like their produce, their product that they produce, and what is compacted in that small store. I was really disappointed to learn that Lake Wildwood Association was encouraging its members to protest this project. I believe most who are in opposition have not visited the Lake of the Pines store, which I have on several occasions coming back from Sacramento after a Costco run, before we had one closer. I see why the board is concerned about the members' safety, given the traffic problem at Highway 20 and Pleasant Valley Road that could arise during an evacuation is their concern, and I'm most grateful. At the last required evacuation, we never received a notice, and we lived on Jayhawk only, in the middle, only a mile and a half from the exit. Took us three hours, three hours to exit Lake Wildwood. They've improved that problem considerably, excuse me. Part of the problem, of course, that we weren't prepared, as was no sheriff, county, any individual at the four-way stop at Highway 20 and Pleasant Valley. From my understanding, Holiday is aware of this congestion issue, and with the addition of the market, turn lanes and the congestion issue will be improved. Personally, I am looking forward to a new Holiday Market with a full-service deli and bakery as I'm getting older. The expanded market will also help eliminate long drives to town and provide improved access to Commercial Street and Highway 20. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Chris Stiles, I'm with Remy Moose Manley. I am representing the Lake Wildwood Association, so I would appreciate those extra two minutes if you'll indulge me.
Yes, let's get those on the clock for you.
Thank you much. I've been asked to speak up, I'll do my best. So, to reiterate, we submitted a letter on the ISMND and the project, and as we noted there, the Lake Wildwood Association is not opposed to the project. That's the board's position on the matter, I think we mentioned that a few times throughout our letter, so I want to make that clear from the start. What we do want is to make sure that the impacts of the project are adequately analyzed, disclosed, and mitigated, and that this group and the Board of Supervisors make an informed decision. And what that requires is an environmental impact report, or an EIR. I greatly appreciate the conversation that's been going on today, you've highlighted several of the major issues, but I don't think we heard an adequate response. I think what we've learned is that more analysis needs to be done. A couple of examples are the traffic, I mean, that's getting most of the attention, and we identified a few problem areas, some of the Commissioners identified several others just through the presentation, and also potential solutions. And I heard staff essentially say, maybe, or we could do that, and certainly acknowledging that they could do more. But we, hasn't been identified is a solution for the traffic problems that the project will create. And we think that the traffic issues have been understated. Excuse me. There are some holes in the analysis, we reviewed the county's response to our comment letter, and they didn't address some of the issues. I really don't want to repeat myself, but the, kind of even assuming that the analysis is valid, it's been acknowledged that there will be traffic, there will be issues with trucks. I don't want to say something false, but I think the traffic study said seven medium and seven heavy-duty trucks. I think maybe the five or six reference was an average, but there could be more than that on certain days, so. Traffic's going to be a problem, there are solutions to discuss that have not been identified yet. This project requires an EIR, this community deserves an EIR. We need to disclose and analyze the impact, so I'm just going to walk through a couple areas briefly. One is to emphasize the fair argument standard of review. So SEQA sets an extremely low bar for requiring an EIR. It encourages EIRs because that's where the public gets involved, that's more robust analysis. So if there's a fair argument that a project may have a significant impact, you do an EIR. And that's the case here. We noted aesthetic impacts, we cited the Dollar General EIR, where the projects there were much smaller and the county required an EIR. It shouldn't be viewed as a penalty, that's kind of a connotation or a way that it's framed, you know, you have to do an EIR. It is beneficial, you get public disclosure, you get community buy-in and all of those important things. And, again, informed decision-making. A couple of other points that I don't think were addressed either today or in responses to our comments, were the kind of defects, if you will, with the modeling in the traffic analysis. And I think the biggest issue is that the models didn't capture kind of the unique circumstances of this project site. A lot of the kind of default model parameters were used, or they calculated trips, pass-by trips, you'll hear that term, based on square footage. But this is really a unique site, where there's an existing Holiday Market store that's moving further away from its, a large portion of its customer base at Lake Wildwood. And those trips now are often golf carts, golf carts or non-vehicle trips, which will turn into vehicle trips. I think I saw in the response that they subtracted golf cart trips from the vehicle trips, which wouldn't make sense, because those are even more trips. So, we're concerned that the traffic that would be generated by this project are kind of severely undercounted. But in any event, even knowing what we know, there's more that can be done, there are solutions to these problems, and the community deserves that.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Good afternoon, my name is Braden Chadwick, I am outside counsel to Holiday Market, and if you have one attorney, you might as well have two, I guess. Commissioner McPateer, to answer one of your questions, and much hate's made about this in the Remy Moose Manley letter, is if you have Dollar General and they had to do an EIR, why not a Holiday Market as well? And the simple answer is this, is that, that EIR, and I do remember it because I was in a hearing when it was being considered, was that there were actually three, there were actually three Dollar Generals at issue at that, at three different locations, and the county's reason for requiring an EIR is because of the cumulative impact of all three stores going in all at once, with all the varied changes and traffic and everything else, the receptive and environmental concerns, land use issues up in, I think, not only Penn Valley, and, but I also think it was up Rough and Ready, I think, as memory serves. So there were multiple stores going in, multiple conversations going on, multiple impacts, and the cumulative impact of all of those required an EIR. That was why the county required it, not because it was a one single grocery store. So, with that, I will just say this, that the Remy Moose Manley letter focuses exclusively on, or almost exclusively on, the fair argument standard, and what that really means. And they throw a lot of chaff in the air on a lot of issues, traffic being one of them. I think it's interesting, if you take a look at the letter that we submitted as a rejoinder to the Remy Moose Manley letter, there are a lot of claims that consist of a lot of easily refuted, what I call parade of horribles that were in that letter, that rely on a lot of things just pure conjecture, open-ended questions, and just questions that they would pose in the letter, without pointing to any evidence in the administrative record. And that's important, because the fair argument standard relies on there being some evidence in the administrative record that there is an environmental impact, that impact is going unmitigated, and that there is a fair argument that an EIR is required for that. But what they point is too, is a lot of questions, a lot of conjecture, and they pointed nothing administrative record. And what they do point at, when they talk about, for example, traffic, one of the things that they omit is a lot of the mitigation measures. I think there are six or seven mitigation measures exclusively on traffic that were pointed out in the county's document, recommended by the consultant that was then independently reviewed by your Public Works Department. Those are then incorporated as suggestions of approval into this project that you're being asked to impose on the project to make sure that the traffic isn't an issue. And you heard staff say that, independently finding, that once mitigation is incorporated, that brings the LOS back up to where it should be, there is no impact there, and it essentially mitigates the traffic issues. So, I'll go back to the point that you have to have, in addition to questions, in addition to conjecture, in addition to complaints, you actually have to have and be able to point to some evidence in the administrative record that there's an issue, there's a problem, and it's identified there. The burden's on them to actually propose this and show that there is an impact, and that impact is going unmitigated, which they haven't done, and there wasn't an independent study that was attached to their letter, there was just questions and sometimes omitting the mention of the mitigation measures. I will say also that, in that letter that we submitted for your consideration, that it misconstrues the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. It ignores not only mitigation, but ultimately fails to point or provide any outside evidence. So along with that, I would just say this, that in addition to everything that's been said or will be said today, that this project has undergone a lot of analysis, a lot of independent analysis that's been verified by planning staff and Department of Public Works, and that a lot of heat has been given to the public comments and the comments that have been brought up by the community. Finally, I'll say this, that in addition to, I think, a lot of the hay that was made on everything from, you know, potential blight or, or impacts on aesthetics, that, you know, the proposals that have been provided here, especially on, for example, aesthetics is another issue that we could take and talk about for a long time, but basically on one side you have a self-storage facility, on the other you have a strip mall. And again, this is going in a place that was designed for this area, was designed for commercial and industrial uses, and that's what was planned here by the county itself since the 90s, I think is what Mr. Foss said. So, this market is, fulfills a needed place in the community, it is providing, and you heard from some of the, the public comment already of what an asset it would be, and that there's a reason in SEQA that there are different levels of environmental analysis. And the comment that an EIR is not really a punishment, an EIR is a great thing, everyone should do an EIR, is simply not true. There's a reason and a place for a mitigated native declaration. And that's where you have impacts that are mitigated, to the point where you don't have any significant environmental impacts.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeannie Pittman, and I have a business on Commercial Avenue. I get to drive down Commercial Avenue at least six days a week, various different times throughout the day. Currently, there are a number of trucks and large vehicles, not just delivery trucks, but people driving their own personal big trucks, trailers, not just livestock trailers, but other things. They park on either side of Commercial Avenue, there's the gas station there, and if you want a true driving adventure, I challenge any of you to come out and try to get past Commercial Avenue when you have one of those trucks parked on the south side. The folks coming out of the gas station tend to just start out there, but that has nothing to do with this current project. There's a lot of traffic right now. There was a letter that I obtained, because I shop at the Holiday Market now, and I have for the last 35 years. Used to ride my horse over there from the other side of 20, don't do that no more though. So, I obtained this letter on the 19th of November, and it indicated about the $300,000 that would be contributed, or, yes, contributed towards the future road improvement that the county has planned on Pleasant Valley Road and Highway 20. If the project is not approved, there will be no funds. So, I guess one of my questions is, all of that $300,000 going to go toward the Pleasant Valley Road Project Fund, because it breeds like it will? And will any of these projects be done other than this paint or striping before the project, excuse me, before the Holiday were to open? I think it's fair to say, if somebody's hugging the road on the right-hand side of the road, they're probably going to turn right. If they're hugging it towards the left side, whether there's a line or not, they're most likely going to turn left. We do have a street, however, right across from Pleasant Valley Road, and that- We do have a street, however, right across from Pleasant Valley Road, and that's branding Iron Lane. And those folks, right now, they get to enjoy the experience going both ways of what getting in and out of their road is like. So we all know traffic's an issue. I would like to see mitigation, some mitigation, before it were to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Keegan. I live at 17756 Chaparral Drive. That's in Lake Wildwood, but Penn Valley. I am the chairperson for the two firewise communities that comprise Lake Wildwood, as well as the Wildwood Ridge community is part of one of our firewise communities. And I'm here because I'm always shocked that we have these big projects. It's my second one in two years. I've come to say the same thing. And that is that nobody talks about evacuation, although the county makes a lot of messages about how that's our number-one priority in dealing with fire evacuation. And once again, we have a project where it hasn't been discussed. Just to clarify a couple of things, that center two-way left-turn lane was added after the 49er fire because Pleasant Valley Road failed so badly in that fire that they put that lane in, and it was to be used as an evacuation lane. Come to 2017, the Lobo Fire, Pleasant Valley Road failed again, all the way from the traffic light on Highway 20, all the way back into our community, getting to the hours long, because you already heard about it, for people to get out of our community. It started at Highway 20. So we look at this project and its proximity to that very, very critical intersection, and we acknowledge that we're going to add more traffic. We're going to add commercial trucks that can't cross those three lanes, make that left-hand turn, and get into the one lane to get the heck out of there if they happen to be doing that in time of evacuation. That truck leaving commercial property, if it's a semi, one of those big trucks, has a potential for causing a disaster further down that street for a long period of time. So I just wanted to kind of say that Caltrans, obviously, knows something's going on at Highway 20 and Pleasant Valley Road, okay? They know what happened in that evacuation in 2017, and they know what happened before that. In the town hall that was presented to us at Lake Wildwood, there was discussion of adding, taking that center lane that's going straight across 20 and making that a left-turn lane, so that you had two left-turn lanes that could then extend further down and move more traffic quickly out of our area, as well as the right-hand turn going to Uba City that could also handle the straight-ahead traffic, because it's not really a busy lane. So this is known, this is a known problem, okay? I'm not an engineer. Traffic studies, to me, you can fudge numbers any which way you want, but it's an issue at that intersection, and especially an issue in the most critical time that any of us are going to have in our lives, okay? And the solution has been discussed, which was to add that left-turn lane, so that you could actually get two lanes of traffic leaving. So now you have three ways of getting out of Lake Wildwood, very, very, Lake Wildwood, Wildwood Ridge, and the other 1,000 homes that are down in that canyon, okay, that have a way of getting out. It strikes me as impossible for you to consider this project without considering the need to change that intersection, okay? And so I ask you to not let it go on beyond the opening of the store. It has to happen, all right?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Barberia, and I live at 13791 Country Heights Drive in Penn Valley. That's in Wildwood Heights subdivision. And he's just about hit on everything that I wanted to say regarding the evacuation stuff. I mean, it is very true that you cannot get out of the area in sufficient time without a catastrophic wildfire coming over and doing it. I was here the 49er fire. It was the same way. We could not evacuate down where we were at because of the traffic, because of the way the fire came in. So that's kind of a no-brainer. I suggest that all of you guys just read that, read that evacuation study. It tells everything in there with regards to what the improvements should be on the roads and at the intersection. And as far as, you know, Caltrans and the way this project was initially set up, I just happened to be a developer and the contractor who built Gateway Industrial and Gateway Center, you know, on there. And with regards to Kersh, Commercial Avenue, that was never supposed to be there. On the original site plan, there was just the cul-de-sac. What happened was, Caltrans made a mistake, and they approved the project where the gas station was because they, because they put an entrance off the Caltrans right-of-way within 500 feet of that right-of-way. So one of the conditions of approval that we had to do was put in Commercial Avenue, you know, and that's the reasoning for that. And the zoning, when the zoning was done with the industrial park, with the storage unit, and that piece of property in the middle, it was intended to be light industrial, not commercial, as otherwise it would have been, it would have been commercial at the time. So in order to change that from, you know, light industrial, commercial is completely not what the existing planners back in 1995 did when they improved this project. They wanted Commercial Avenue to be a complete street to go right straight through and exit off a shadow lane, unobstructed, not with speed bumps. You've got so many other businesses in that Gateway Industrial and Gateway Center that it's a way to get traffic back to Lake Wildwood going out. In addition to that, you know, nobody seems to have mentioned how much traffic is going to be generated from Penn Valley. You know, the amount of traffic that come across there is going to be remarkable. And those, those streetlights in that is not going to handle it, and neither will the...
Thank you.
My name's Kathy E. Ville, and I live in Wildwood. Basically, I'm here to advocate on top of branding iron. If you've ever tried to come out of there on a normal day and turn left, you're sitting, and it's only going to be worse for the people and the business, the winery that's down there. So I would really like to hear what the engineers and you folks are going to do about protecting the people coming off of branding iron. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to comment?
My name's Norman Beckett. I live in Wildwood. I've been living there about 15 years. As far as this project goes, I'm all for it. As far as the turn that everybody's been talking about, I believe that's up to Public Works to stripe it properly. Worst-case scenario, traveling west on 20, instead of a free-flow yield, you could put a stoplight there that would meter the traffic turning right, which would allow any traffic coming from Commercial or the other one to make a left turn very easily. Currently, Public Works has adjusted the timing at this intersection. Two months ago, the traffic was backing up on Highway 20. Now it's not. Obviously, you know, they stay abreast of what's going on in, on that intersection. But full, full exposure, I worked for Holiday Market, I don't know, 25, 30 years ago. If Richie says he's going to do a good job, he's going to do a good job. If he says he's going to pay X amount of money to mitigate any situation, he's going to do that. After working for them, I went on to another career, very successful, and I visited his stores throughout the state. He has quite a few. All of them, top-notch. All the management, top-notch. He cares about his people, and the people are funding this project. It's not him. It's his people. It's a, it's an owned business by the people that are running those businesses. Everybody has a piece of the pie. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be negative on this project in any way because I've been to the Lake of the Pines store. I saw it built. I saw the mitigation, keeping it off the main highway. They have two entrances. It's, it's a no-brainer. Is there going to be a little more traffic? Yes. And as far as trucking traffic, when I manage stores, most of my trucks came in around 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, and were on the highway to other stores. And currently, they have large trucks going up Commercial, making deliveries. You have Pepsi, Coke, 7-Up, beer companies. These trucks are already there. They're already making that left turn.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. I'm Karen, Karen Lauterbeck with, we own Grapevine Winery on Branding Iron Road. Just two things. We were hoping for traffic, for those of us coming from Branding Iron onto Pleasant Valley Road, and we had submitted this back in April, to put a keep-clear sign on the road so that people coming from Commercial Street or Pleasant Valley Road could see a keep-clear, so that people from Branding Iron exiting, especially right or left, not going straight across, so that people don't block the road while people are trying to get out of Branding Iron. So a keep-clear sign, we would really love to have. And also, maybe some signage that's right on Commercial Street saying, watch for opposing traffic, because no one on Commercial Street ever looks to see that anyone's coming out of Branding Iron, and lots of almost accidents. So it would be great if we could have a sign for opposing traffic, maybe something for people that are coming from Pine Shadow's Lane direction down Branding Iron that says, branding iron one way, Commercial Avenue the other way. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
30 seconds. I'm sorry. I'm a nervous public speaker. No one has brought up the change in the parking along Commercial. Right now, it's 90 degrees. Apparently, it's going to be parallel parking. That's going to block traffic. If, and people are like me, I've forgotten when I got my driver's license many years ago, parallel parking. So please consider that. And you're taking parking spaces away from those businesses, too. Thank you.
Hi. Maggie Popplewell, live in Lake Wildwood. I shop at both the current one and Lake of the Pines. I told my next-door neighbor, who's a weekender, you got to go there. She went there. She came back. It was like Costco trip. So it's like, people need to understand what kind of goods and services that you provide. I think it's great. I really am for the new store. I know these other issues can be mitigated with a lot of dedication. And one more thing, I haven't heard anyone ask or say, how many more jobs will this new store create? Well, I mean, if, I have to believe that there's going to be new jobs in the community. So I think that's a plus. So go for it.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Drew Prakash. I live at 17625 Black Forest Lane, Penn Valley. I'm just on the other side of the fence from Lake Wildwood. I get to look into their backyards a couple of times a day. Father of two teenagers, I shop at the Holiday Store four times a week. Penn Valley needs this new store badly. The old one is crumbling, falling down, and insufficient for the growing Penn Valley's needs. Five trucks coming out of one road from 10 to 2 is not going to make any difference to anybody. Yeah, there's traffic. There's going to be traffic. You've asked them to do all sorts of things, and they've answered all of your requests. They put forward mitigations. They've submitted their forms. They've done their reports. I think Holiday has done an outstanding job, and it's an asset to our community, and I'm rooting for this to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else? Oh, spoke too soon.
Thank you. My name is Vicki McIntyre, and I live on Appaloosa Court in Penn Valley. I am not in Lake Wildwood. My husband and I have lived in the Penn Valley area on acreage for some 20 years. And we just feel very, very strongly that we need the added services of this proposed Holiday Market. We are tired of going up the hill, the environmental impact of the vehicles going up the hill and down the hill and up and down to obtain the groceries, you know, that we need as we're aging. Bakery and deli, number one, and then an expanded, you know, protein with fish and meats and so forth. We need it. Also, personally, my sympathies are with the employee owners of this organization. This is not a huge corporate organization, as you know. The employees are the ones who are investing. They've made the capital investment in buying the land. I feel strongly that the EIR should not be a requirement. That's more money, potentially putting good after bad. I understand the positive outputs of an EIR, and I understand the process, but it's widely known that Nevada County is not particularly business-friendly. And I just see it as more and more delays, more and more cost, more and more roadblocks, more and more, you know, deterrents from small businesses like Holiday doing business in our community. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to close the public comment at this point. Thank you guys very much for your input. And let's, staff, do you have response to any of the things that we've heard? Should we start there?
Sure. Maybe we'll start with traffic.
Excellent choice.
David Garcia, Public Works Director for Nevada County, and I'll defer to Trish to chime in. If I miss anything, I'll try to go down the list. So first, one of the big things that came up was the evacuation study that was done. The county did do an evacuation study in 2024, and we've been working on trying to improve safety and evacuation in the county. One of the big things about this store is it's a local serving store, essentially serving the community that it's already in, moving down the street about a mile. For evacuation study purposes, if you read the study, the real bottleneck is the gates for Lake of the Pines, trying to get 5,000 folks out of there. And, or sorry, Lake Wildwood, long day, trying to get 5,000 residents out of the actual community itself. Once you get onto Pleasant Valley Road, as was mentioned earlier, we have that center lane, which will act in an emergency situation as an overflow so that we can get as many folks through there as possible. Sort of the same thing with the Highway 20 intersection, which is the bottleneck theoretically in an evacuation scenario wouldn't be that intersection because law enforcement would likely be flagging traffic through there. The bottleneck would be, again, getting that volume of people out of that community area. So this wouldn't have an impact, at least in our estimation, in the evacuation study. Another thing that was mentioned was, yeah.
Following up on that, you know, I, as I said, I live over by Nevada Union, and I know I'll never be able to get to Highway 49. I just know it.
Right.
So I know that we are all going over to Sierra College, which is about three blocks away. Do you feel... Do you feel that this market becomes an evacuation zone for you?
I, in what sense?
It's got 300 parking spaces or whatever it's got, so that people can actually park themselves there as an evacuation site?
Theoretically.
Okay. Thanks.
The next thing that was mentioned, and again, sloppy notes, so I'll try to hit as many of these as I can, and if I miss something, you guys can, can point it out to me. Branding Iron, the mention was of having a keep clear striping on that section. Based on the comments, we did break the striping up in that, that area, but typically, we don't like to put keep clear striping in any, you know, unless it's a fire station, for example, for various reasons. But we did change the, and, and the traffic consultant added this as mitigation, changed the way that striped on purpose to make that a more functional intersection. See if there's anything. Oh, and the last one that I'll try to hit is, and again, Trish can jump in here, is a lot of questions have come up about the mitigation fee program, how that program works. We do have a local mitigation fee program in the county. This intersection, Highway 20 Pleasant Valley Road, is identified in the local mitigation fee program. The, the way the program works is you want potential developers to pay their fair share, but you don't want to create a situation where nobody can develop because it costs too much money. I mean, the burden of improving that intersection in its entirety is too onerous for most developments, unless you maybe had a Walmart or a Costco go in. And so the way it works is you, there's a formula that's set out in writing. They pay their fair share based on square footage, use all of those things, and it goes towards improving that intersection. In this case, the applicant's going to be paying about 320, or 300, is it 320 or 302, towards that improvements of that intersection. It will be going to that intersection. In order to improve that intersection, it's going to require a, a much larger project. So what this development does do is it elevates the project. It already has done that. It's going to go into our capital improvement plan. We've started conversations with Caltrans to, you know, what future improvements might look like in that intersection. We're already working on potential funding opportunities as far as grants to study that intersection and see what potential future improvements could go there. So this project elevates it. It gives us funds to start that process, but the ultimate improvements in that intersection are beyond the scope of the $300,000 or what a development could pay for, for this project.
And, and does that mean that, that, that would be a joint program between Caltrans and yourself? This is not solely just the county pushing out some lanes? This is Caltrans throwing in dollars, too?
So it would likely be a county project because we would be the ones that are driving the project. But any project that's done in Caltrans right away obviously requires us to coordinate with, work with, get approvals from Caltrans. So it's something that would be done in concert with the community input, with Caltrans' input, but a county-driven project.
But those funds go directly into some specific fund that says Pleasant Valley Road intersection. Is that what I'm getting from you?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Earlier, when we talked about striping, my impression was that you guys were fine with the striping as it is, but if there was a problem, you would change it? But I just heard you say that you actually changed it already as part of the plan?
Sort of two different situations. The one that was discussed earlier, I believe, was the intersection above Commercial, and the question was, do we want to have dedicated left-turn pockets? This is mostly de, or driven by the Branding Iron intersection allowing for a break in that to make it more obvious that there's going to be through traffic and turning movements going through that intersection associated in addition to the regular movements with Branding Iron.
Isn't it the same intersection?
No.
Can we look at the? Oh, it's offset. I get it. I'm with you now.
Branding Iron is offset from Commercial. This one, right.
So this, directly across from Commercial, that's Branding Iron, correct? Okay. Just for this help, what, this is some other street up here, whatever that is, one up, that I was referring to on the left-hand turn lane. So, so currently, currently, the people coming out of that, that street, whatever that is there, currently, so could you talk a little more about Branding Iron now that I know exactly where it is? If we go back to that slide and I think answer what Danny's asking, which is, tell me what goes on in that, at that intersection?
What's the striping plan that?
Again, continue to have the break how it is now with the mitigation that was proposed for the project, with the right-in, right-in, right-out, and center pocket striping on Commercial itself.
So, so therefore, the only striping that will be occurring is sort of a stop sign or whatever, and, and a median line going down Commercial? Is that, I, I'm trying to understand your, your lingo and my pea brain.
So the current mitigation measures for the Holiday Market project include striping on Commercial.
Yeah.
That's for a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane, and then the same striping up above on Pine Shadows.
So a right, tell me what you mean by a right-turn lane. So I'm coming out of Commercial, and there will actually be some form of a merging lane?
No, there will be on Commercial, a right-turn lane from Commercial, so at the stop sign. You'll be able to either go in the right-turn lane or the left-turn lane.
Okay.
Right, or three.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
And the applicant is paying for all that striping as part of their conditions of approval? That's not county funds?
Correct. Yeah.
So to beat a dead horse, if somebody wants to go straight across to Branding Iron, from what I understand, there's a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane. Is that correct?
And a, it's a shared lane, so it'd be a left-turn slash through lane.
Got it, okay. And they're, they're wanting some sort of marking, identifying?
Yeah, they're requesting a keep clear on the pavement, and we did analyze that in, in April, but again, that's not standard for intersections like that. I really think the improvement that is needed is the Pleasant Valley and Highway 20, which then we would also be looking at this intersection as well when funds are accumulated to, to do that project.
Yeah, okay. And I suppose you will monitor, and if there's enough traffic there getting backed up that they can't get across, then you make a change then?
Correct. Yeah, we consistently monitor traffic, but realize that, like, Highway 20 and Pleasant Valley Road, that is in our local traffic mitigation fee program, and so that's fully funded by development projects. We also seek grants to do those projects, but there's no other funding sources available. So it's either grants or mitigation fees from development projects.
So this sounds like it's a larger traffic flow issue that you guys have been aware of and would be thinking about and discussing whether this project were happening or not, correct?
Correct.
And that this project doesn't substantially alter the way that you are thinking about that?
Correct.
And with the striping that they're doing and the payment into the fee, it actually helps with this conversation?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I also just want to clarify this issue. So without this development, that intersection improvement project would have $302,000 less in its slush fund. That would be earmarked for.
Correct. It would have zero funds.
Okay. And, and the rest of the money to improve that intersection is coming from the general traffic mitigation fund?
It would be coming from future development and/or grants. So what we would be able to do with the $300,000 are the initial studies, which would allow us to apply for grants to do the construction. So that's really how I would see this going forward. As David mentioned, we're in conversations with Caltrans as well, so they're a partner, as well as Nevada County Transportation Commission, in helping us find funding for this, but you usually have to have the initial analysis completed first. So if this development were to be approved, their fees would help us do that initial analysis.
And just for, just for, out of curiosity, how long would that process typically take? Is this like a, a year to, two years or two years to five years?
If you're talking to construction, it's several years at least. It's really, again, going to be dependent on available funding. Currently, state and federal funds are somewhat limited right now, but can that change in a couple of years? Certainly. I mean, we've seen that happen. What I would reference, though, is if you want to look at success of this fee program, and even all of our jurisdictions and fees programs from Grass Valley to Nevada City to Truckee, a lot of the more recent traffic improvements are a direct result of these impact fee programs. And these are common throughout the state of California. Thank you.
I have a question for planning staff. Going back to the, actually, a couple of them. Going back to the comment about the landscaping and the native plants, that seems like a relatively innocuous change for conditions of approval. Is that something that we could include?
So condition of approval number 11 does contain language that native vegetation shall be included in all required planting pursuant to the zoning code?
So does that mean that it's included as in, there's three native plants there, and then all of their friends are non-native, or that all of them are native?
I don't believe the code prescribes a number or a percentage. We try to maximize the number of native plants where possible, but it can vary based on kind of the landscape architect's recommendations. But we do have the requirement for some level of native vegetation.
So Richie, would you have any problem with having your landscape architect put in more native plants? My other question is, on the back edge of the, of the property, it looks like you're not going to eventually be using that, but is that back end being re-graded? So it could be fenced off during construction and not, not impacted?
Can we get this on the record, please?
Pardon?
Could the applicant come up just for, to get it on the record, this discussion? If you wouldn't mind coming up, thank you.
So we don't have anything planned for that back area. It would be zoned light industrial. If the county would like, you know, that to be pursued as light industrial, that's fine with us. Currently, it's just going to be.
I was thinking more about the trees and the impact of construction, right?
Yeah, we really don't have a use for it. It's not part of our budget in that project.
And, and it, you're not re-grading it in order to make it match up with the remainder of it, right? So it could be fenced off and not used as a lay-down area?
Correct. Correct, yeah. It's funny, where the truck parking is, is a pretty adequate area behind it.
Yeah, yeah, and the front parking lot, too, actually.
Yeah.
And then my other question is on the, on the overhead lights in the parking area. So I noticed that the ones in the back are shorter than the ones in the front, and I know that this is kind of related to the dark sky sort of thing. Is, is it feasible to make the ones in the front shorter and less bright that way as well? That's probably actually a question for your electrical engineer and the amount of foot candles that he has to get across that parking lot, but I am curious, if, planning-wise, if that's something that we've been able to do in other parking lots?
From an operational standpoint, one of the things we run into is the landscaping requirements call for so many trees, and if you put a light where there's a tree, eventually, there's no more light. So by going a little taller, you can have less light fixtures and get the same safety standards. So that's why taller in that case, because we try to make sure we don't put a tree and a light in the same planter.
Right.
Because eventually, you don't have a light anymore.
Okay. Thanks.
That's why they're taller.
So the light fixtures are also required to be shielded and directed downward, and the final photometric plan needs to show zero light spillage. So hopefully achieving the same result of no light spillage, even with the taller light fixture.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
I have a quick question that piggybacks off of some of this line of questioning. In the report, it states that approximately 39% of the site is undeveloped, and that 15% of a site is required to be permanent open space. Is there a portion of this site that is that dedicated, 15% permanent open space? Or is that not defined?
It's not, it's not required to be recorded anywhere. It's basically kind of a set-aside area, and they have, you know, obviously, area in the, in the rear portion to provide for that, so.
So generally, when we have a project layout, we ensure that the site plan includes the required open space, and then that's what gets approved eventually and then gets built. If there were to be any amendments or any expansion or any new development, the new development would still have to meet that minimum requirement. So it's kind of an ongoing check to ensure that it, that it remains somewhere on-site, that 15%. So it's not going to get covered over or utilized because that standard will still be applied to any future development on that backside of the parcel or any expansion on the store itself.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? All right. Would you, anybody like to make a motion? I believe this is in your district.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, just from a planning and land use perspective, it sounds like the applicant's gone above and beyond to meet all the conditions that the planning department has set forth. And I certainly hear all the public comment concerns about evacuation and traffic. To me, that's kind of a broader conversation and not necessarily, should not necessarily be put on the shoulders of one, one company. And it sounds like Public Works is kind of already working on this proposal, and, and the project actually gives a significant jumpstart with the, with the $300,000 that they're contributing. So I'd like to make a motion to, on proposal one, to, after reviewing and considering, recommend that the board supervisors adopt the proposed Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, EIS 24-0007 pursuant to sections 15074 and 15097 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and making findings A through C as shown in the staff report.
Can we add the native plants and protection of that back area to this piece?
Sure. With an amendment to show, sorry, did I interrupt?
Wouldn't be that part. It wouldn't be as.
It would probably be the, the final action and the development permit.
Okay.
It'll be action number five.
All right. Then we're looking for a second on this. A second.
Your vote on this motion, Commissioner French?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Millman?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make a motion that after reviewing and considering the proposed general amendment plan application, GPA 24-0003, recommend the board supervisors approve amending the general plan land use map designation of APN 051-240-014 to change the land use designation for the parcel by increasing the amount of land designated neighborhood commercial and approximately 1.9 acres to approximately 4.3 acres, and decreasing the amount of land designated industrial from approximately 3.6 acres to approximately 1.2 acres, based on the findings A through C set forth in Title 12, Chapter 5, Section 090 of the Nevada County Code, as shown in staff report.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Your vote on this motion, Commissioner French?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Millman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I move that after reviewing and considering the proposed rezone application, RZN 24-0003, recommend the board supervisors approve the rezone to amend the zoning district map, number 16A, to rezone the approximate 4.3
map number 16A to rezon the approximate 4.3 acres of APN 051-240-014 to Neighborhood Commercial Site Performance Combining District, C1 SP, and the approximate 1.2 acres of light industrial plan development site performance combining districts based on the findings A through C set forth in Title 12, Chapter 5, Section 090 of the Nevada County Code as shown in the staff report.
With the addition of native plants and...
That section five.
There's two more.
There's another screen.
Cheltenham again, sorry. Okay, we need a second.
A second.
Your vote, Commissioner French?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Millman?
Yes.
Thank you.
What we've all been waiting for.
And I move that after reviewing and considering the proposed Oak Resources Management Plan Application, MGT 24-0011, recommend the board supervisors approve the Oak Resources Management Plan prepared by Madrone Ecological Consulting and Greg Matsuzak Environmental Consulting to allow the removal of landmark groves and landmark trees, make findings, making findings A through B as shown in the staff report.
We need a second.
A second.
Your vote, Commissioner French?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Millman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, to recommend, make a motion that after reviewing and considering the proposed project, recommend the board supervisors approve the development permit, DVP 24-2, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring and reporting program of attachment one of the staff report pursuant to Nevada County, Nevada County zoning regulations, make findings A through L as shown in the staff report with an amendment for the applicant to use as much native landscaping as possible and protect the back area.
So I have a couple amendments I'd appreciate if you'd consider, Mr. Foley. One is to require a designated left-hand turn lane from Pleasant Valley Road onto Pine Shadows Road. And the second is to require signage in the grocery complex to direct large trucks to exit onto Pine Shadows Road.
So you're talking about striping the middle of the lanes?
I'm talking about creating a designated lane currently, as Commissioner French puts it, they go into these suicide lanes, and I'd like to get rid of that term and move it towards just a designated left-hand turn lane coming into Pine Shadows that we discussed earlier.
So not building another lane, but to re-stripe the lane that currently exists?
Correct, correct. And, and I said, trying to get as many of our trucks over to Pine Shadow because as they acknowledge, there's some concern about those big trucks exiting left out of Commercial.
Is that something we can add as amendment?
Yes, you can add that as suggested recommendations to the conditions of approval that would be forwarded to the board of supervisors. Commissioner Foley, since your vote, you can say as amended to include, if you prefer to.
Okay, so for section five, as amended to include for the board to take under consideration...
Wait, wait, wait. So you want the trucks to drive across the front of the store and out Pine Shadow?
Yes.
Oh.
I want them to be able, those large trucks, five of them or so, that they go out at various hours, which mainly, I understand, are non-large traffic areas, to be able to get them to go to right. If you can put that up again, that would be great, to go right in front of the store and out Pine Shadows. That's my, that's my recommendation based on, based on the so many concerns here about exiting large trucks off of Commercial.
So you're talking about where the public parks out front?
So here, Steve, is that truck comes out and he goes, instead of going left out Commercial, he goes right, that half a block there, and then hits Pine Shadow and goes left. It's a much larger and much better visibility coming out of Pine Shadows than it certainly is out of, coming out of Commercial.
I don't know that a truck could easily make that turn without some revisions to the site plan.
Well, I heard the, I heard the owner say that he thought potentially you could put a sign that says trucks go right. I don't...
I think, I think he was saying that he would put a sign to clarify that they wouldn't go right.
Could, this might require a little more conversation, maybe? Is that, does everybody understand what he wants?
Um, are you...
Do you understand what I want, Steve, or not?
I think so.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just into safety issue. I think this is, this is a big issue relative to coming out of Commercial and taking a left.
I think driving the trucks across the front of the building is problematic.
Well, I would prefer, I, I'm sure you guys considered this in the application and the approval, correct?
Yeah, and again, the truck traffic is primarily outside of peak hours. If you look at the site plan, turning left from where the trucks are coming from behind the market works with a truck turning templates. Some of the trucks, if they're large enough, may not be able to easily make their right turn to go in front of the store. I think, again, though, if you had a truck delivery during a peak hour, I mean, they're probably going to turn right because they're going to want to go out Pine Shadows like Commissioner McAtier's suggesting. I would be hesitant, though, to condition that or require that of the project. Again, I think the traffic analysis anticipated the trucks coming out Commercial primarily, and again, that's outside the peak hours.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't know if we want to make that a condition.
Okay, well, I thought I would fight for that, but I do think that one thing is going to happen is those people from Penn Valley area cross the highway will, and everyone else will quickly realize that going out Pine Shadows is a much better exit for them than the Commercial. And I just was hoping to be able to push the truck traffic in that direction also. Thank you. I'll drop that, but I still hold my item on, on the left-hand turn.
Okay, so talk to me about that one. You're talking about a left-hand turn on Pine Shadows, right? But that's really...
No, no, no.
Pleasant Valley.
Can we go back to that one picture slide? It makes it very clear there.
I think what he's saying is to...
Right there. Whoop.
No, the other one.
The other one. So you're coming from Lake Wildwood up on the top, okay, and you're coming down, and instead it's getting into this suicide lane that says left or right. You have an actually dedicated lane that says turn left onto Pine Shadows.
Right, but who's going to be coming at you in that same lane?
No one. But, but, but the perception of the driver is that I'm going into this suicide lane that somebody else might come into. So if you designate it as a left-hand turn, then the driver feels much more at ease in getting into that lane to then take a left onto Pine Shadows.
So maybe, maybe we phrase it, that we recommend to the board that they consider additional striping on Pleasant Valley Road for entrance into Pine Shadow and Commercial.
I think that's a good compromise.
I'd be good with that, with that compromise.
Okay. So...
Okay, so then...
So we need to move to, to pass section five with the amendment for the board to consider additional striping on Pleasant Valley Road into Pine Shadow and with the addition for the applicant to consider more native planting in their landscape design.
Yeah, and the protection of the back end of that site. And then, we need somebody to second it.
A second.
Your vote, Commissioner French?
Yes.
Commissioner Foley?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Millman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone. That concludes our public hearing on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Upcoming planning commission meetings.
So at this time, we don't have any scheduled. Definitely won't be this year. It'll be into January of next year at the earliest. Jodina, am I missing anything?
No, you're correct.
Okay. We will reach out to you as soon as we have an idea that there may be a hearing to make sure that you guys are available, but it definitely won't be this month, and it'll probably be, if anything, the second meeting in January, if at all, and we'll just keep you posted on that.
And so, Brian, I guess the next one is dealing with this cell tower, or is there something else in the works?
Yeah, it's, it's very possible that it could be the cell tower ordinance. I'm not sure if there's another project that's close at this point.
It could potentially be the Corchero Cell Tower project as well that Commander Nicholas is working on.
That's a zoning administrator hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
So, yeah, it's likely it could be the cell tower ordinance.
Okay. Anything else for today? I have an appointment with the eye doctors later this week, so I think it's 3:46 and we will end...